Mr. Rue.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Yes, Commissioners, thank you. We have one work session item tonight. And that stems from a request from a Commissioner to move forward with the in an alternative energy feasibility analysis. So this was completed over the first part of this year in the first quarter. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Logan Cobb. She led this project in our office, and she will introduce our guests tonight. With that, Logan.
Thanks, Brian. So as Brian stated, we have been working with ESG on a feasibility study. So in December of 2020, we entered into a letter of authorization with Energy Systems Group. ESG is an energy service company that drives operational efficiencies. So they really pride themselves in driving revenue, reducing costs, and promoting sustainability for the organizations that they work with. So we asked them to look at four of our facilities, City Hall, the Service Center, and then both of our plants. And then they also looked at one of our pump stations as well. So they looked at everything from solar to wind to geothermal, while also looking at our existing buildings and equipment and evaluating needed and planned repairs. So today with us, we have Keith Baliquette, which is the account executive, and Scott Hayden is their performance engineer. So they will go over with you their report on ways to reduce costs and reduce our carbon footprint. So they are no strangers to the city of Springfield. They've actually already had two presentations, one to staff and then one to the Alternative Energy Committee. So this will be their third presentation for us. So I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Logan. Can everybody hear me okay? Yeah, so it's also very enjoyable to do this live. So we really appreciate that. So I'm gonna, we only have a short period of time here. So I'm gonna go through, kick this thing off, kind of set the stage. So when we first started the project, we set up four objectives, and that was working with city staff to nail those down. And really, it was focusing on selecting renewable technologies that were viable in the city of Springfield, looking at opportunities for carbon reductions, opportunities to save money, and then looking at kind of a combination of those of kind of optimizing those investments against energy reduction, cost reductions, and sustainability. So those were the four objectives we set out to accomplish. And then in terms of kind of the process that we went through, this is kind of an important, important starting point, if you will, kind of sets the stage for what Scott's gonna talk about. So we start with conservation. So we're focusing on, you know, how can we drive down or where are there opportunities to reduce the consumption within your buildings, if you will. The city's done a lot with regard to reducing energy use and consequently costs. But what are some of the other things that we could do to help reduce consumption in your building? And then moving on from there, we get into infrastructure. And defining infrastructure, looking at large boilers, chillers, air conditioning, roofs, windows, things that are, things that protect your investment in terms of your buildings, provide comfort. I like to refer to them as the have-to items in your buildings. It's things that may not provide a great return in terms of cost reductions, because they have a huge capital cost, but they're things that are important to keep your buildings running in terms of optimal performance. So we looked at that. And then, and then, once you do that, you start blending in sustainability. And again, I'll preface this with, we didn't find any incandescence in the city of Springfield. But, you know, once you do all that stuff, you want to look at renewables. So think of it as in terms of, why would you want to put a solar panel to power an incandescent lamp, if you will, in a building? So what we tried to do is drive down, look at opportunities to drive down consumption, and then look at how do we layer on that renewable technology. And then Scott took those different types of renewable technologies and kind of looked at it in terms of application to your particular building. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott to take us kind of down the path that he went in terms of the actual, kind of on a building-by-building basis in terms of, you know, some of the project benefits, starting with conservation.
So when you're looking at the project benefits, you know, when we're talking about energy, energy consumption reduction, we always think about energy reduction and utility cost savings. But there's really a lot of other benefits that comes from doing these items. So just within like conservation, there's also operational cost savings, improved comfort, better indoor environments, and then also better productivity. And then looking at infrastructure improvements, you know, these are also shared benefits from conservation. You can have all those things, but there's also looking at reduced process disruptions, less unplanned downtime, and then overall, just kind of maintaining the building, as kind of Keith pointed out. And another thing is, he said, you know, most of the time you're doing these infrastructure improvements, you're really looking at solving a problem because there's a need. But it's always good to do those things in an energy-efficient manner, just as opposed to just blindly just replacing things one for one, or not really thinking about the overall big picture. And then with renewable energy, they don't, you know, you're not really trying to increase comfort or things like that. You're really just looking at overall utility cost reduction, looking at maybe, looking at net zero carbon emissions, and then also, you know, it's a form of sustainable green energy. So these are all the reduction measures that we started off with at the beginning of the process. And this is everything we evaluated for each of the sites that we looked at. And as we kind of went through our evaluation, all these items that are kind of left in white, highlighted white, are the ones we feel are going to be the most applicable to your site that you have. Typically, the conservation measures are going to have better ROIs than the other two categories. But there is kind of a wide range, because there's so many details that could be different within the two. So really, the best approach, the overall best project, is to look at all the measures within the three categories that we identified and bundle them together into one overall project. As what Keith was saying, you really want to address those first two items before you look renewables. So you're packaging all these together, you get the best, you know, best possible project. And just kind of digging deeper on the renewable energy, I showed earlier that, you know, solar PV and combined heat and power are going to be the two most applicable to your site. And there's really kind of like four areas that we looked at to evaluate those items, natural resource availability, site application and visibility for the public, economic benefits, and then also environmental benefits. And so, you know, the solar PV and the combined heat and power, those are the ones that are going to have the biggest impact for your site. And this one, we also wanted to kind of show you where your facilities sit, just from a benchmarking perspective. City Hall, Service Center, Water Treatment Plant, those facilities are operating about average compared to peer buildings, which would be like other city buildings, you know, other cities with similar buildings. The wastewater treatment plant is actually operating much higher than average, which is really good. And if you look at total energy costs for the five sites that we were looking at, Skinner Lane being the lift station, you can see that the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant really driving energy costs between the five sites. It's a pretty large percentage, about 75%. And then electric costs definitely dominate the natural gas cost. So on this slide, there's kind of a lot going on. But we really just, we're taking everything that we evaluated, that we showed up above in the previous slide, and we put them into one kind of big project. And it's really just to illustrate, if you want to really maximize energy reduction, total carbon reduction, this is what it could look like. It includes conservation measures, it includes needed infrastructure improvement, and it also includes renewable energy at four of the five sites that we looked at. This building, City Hall, is not really a good candidate for renewable energy, but the other four sites could be. And then looking at the pie graph, you can really kind of see where the, you know, the total reduction is coming from. And the two water treatment facilities are the ones we can really take a big piece of the pie out. And so the next couple of slides, we just want to show like, kind of what it would look like. So with solar, we're showing Skinner Lane, the Service Center, how it would look actually at the site. The Service Center would be on the roof, which is not as ideal as it would be on the ground. And then on the next slide, it's showing the water treatment facility and the wastewater treatment plant. Both of the sizes of these systems could be much larger than the other two sites. These sites are land limited versus production limited. These two sites are kind of limited based on usage, because there's not a lot of use at Skinner Lane, where you have more available space there than what you could use in terms of solar. And just kind of, just from a, just to give you kind of a perspective, Skinner Lane, that represents about 175 kilowatt, and like the water treatment facility has 1,500 kilowatts. So there's a lot larger space there, and also there's a higher use there. So you could really get a big impact there with the available, the land available that you have. And one, I have a slide here for the combined heat and power. This is at the wastewater treatment facility. So they have a process there. It's an anaerobic digester. There's actually four of them there. As a part of that project, process, it produces a biogas. So currently, that biogas is getting flared to the atmosphere, and it also goes into a boiler that provides heat into the digestors. And that process just happens all the time. And then also, you have electric getting fed into the, into the plant. So what we would propose for combined heat and power is that we're now sending the biogas into a generator that's producing electricity that's getting fed into the plant. And then also, as a byproduct of that generation process, it's producing a waste heat, and that waste heat can then get fed back into the digestors, which is required. And then, as a result of all that, the biogas would either, would be minimally flared or not flared at all. And then the boilers would, they would remain there if needed, if there's additional heat needed for the digest.
So in terms of, in terms of where we're at, where we're, where we're, where we're heading, if you will, based on some feedback. So we vetted, you know, energy conservation opportunities at all the sites that were provided, as well as renewable, as well as what made sense from a solar perspective. And one of the things Scott mentioned on the solar, from a solar perspective is, we try to match the load with the site, because what you don't want to do is send it out to the utility, and, because you're not going to get a return on that from the utility, you're going to get some sort of marginal cost return. So it's very important to match those together. But in terms of next steps forward, as you could see from the numbers, that was the, what we've done is kind of estimated the maximum cost, if you will, and the maximum savings if you did all that stuff, okay? The return doesn't look very good. So really, I think what next step, I think that in my mind needs to happen is, now that we've looked at the sites and we've got a good feel for what the opportunities are, is really begin defining some measurable goals in terms of carbon reductions, energy reductions, you want to see what kind of return on investment is, is required. Visibility, the Skinner Road was picked up just because you've got a lot of property there. It's also very visible in terms of people seeing it, but provides a very visible impact from an economic development standpoint, in my opinion, of that particular site. It's a really good fit. So Logan, that's really, that's really all I had. I finally got the volume.
Do you have questions?
Sir, thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I recently had to travel to Illinois, and it struck me again on the way out and the way back. As I drove through Indiana, I saw solar panel installation after solar installation on both 70, I-70 and I-74. In Illinois, I saw a wind farm. And in this area of Ohio, which is very similar in climate and layout, we have nothing. Can you give us some sense, are we behind the curve in Ohio in terms of moving towards this, or am I just missing it somewhere along the line?
I'll start this, Scott. You can kind of fill in the blank. The part of it, particularly wind, is going to be, you know, the availability of wind in terms of, you know, if you go into Ohio, you'll see a lot of wind and a bowling green in areas like that. Some of the other states, I know Indiana and Illinois most recently had some incentives from the utility for solar. There was this huge influx of, they were building it as fast as they could, and then the incentives to the utility spent away. So a lot of it comes from incentives from that perspective. You know, we did have the renewable energy standard here in Ohio, so you did see some of that. EPL built a megawatt on their system, if you will. The city Dayton, I had looked at that for the city Dayton, they actually looked at a megawatt for the city Dayton. It just didn't sound wow, because it really came down to the return. It, it gotten, if you're looking at it from a financial perspective, it's a lot of times difficult to be totally.
Yeah, there's not, yeah, I don't think there's much to add to that. I think, you know, there's the power, you know, there's the utility side of renewables, and there's also the consumer side of, like, private entities of solar. Recently, you know, Ohio's not made it as favorable for solar with House Bill 6, but I think it's, a lot of times it varies state to state based on the legislation. And then also, utility rates vary as well between utilities. So that makes, you know, has a pretty large impact as well.
And Indiana is still a regulated state from electric standpoint. You cannot chop electric. Illinois, I think, is somewhat open, but they tend to have much higher rates.
What do you read on where we're going with House? I mean, I know part of it has been revoked. Other parts have continued, ordered to coal burning plants, one in Indiana, as I recall, and one in Ohio. My sense is there's changes that are going to occur at federal level, and maybe some money, depending upon what Congress does. And I suspect everybody in this room will have suggestions in terms of how we spend that money. And I would expect that. But from your read of what's going on at the General Assembly level here in Ohio, where are we headed with this whole House Bill 6 and alternative energy? Do we hold our cards a little, or should we further look into these options so that if and when those incentives come, we're ready to look at these seriously? What's your crystal ball say about the two?
I don't have a real good crystal ball on HB 6. I mean, it's been, it's been, other than some recent changes with, I think, the FirstEnergy, the money that was going to go to FirstEnergy, that is really, it's been silent across the board. So I'm probably not good to comment on that. But I will tell you personally, from, and maybe even from a company standpoint, I can't speak for ESG, but I always look at, whenever I look at a project, I always look at, how can we make this project stand on the merit of this project? Because, you know, Brian knows me well. I've been a member of the Ohio City Managers Association for the last 17 years. I'm there every year. And, you know, these folks are my colleagues now. And so I always look at a project that's going to stand on its own. And I would tell you, the first project I did in municipal space was the city of Van Delle back in '07, and they're still a reference, even though I don't work for the same company. So my feel is, make good business decisions based on the, on the goals of the city. Maybe the government will catch up with us, but, you know, set the standard for what you, what you want to, the citizens to view the city in terms of your progress. I think a lot of this stuff, we've talked about it, in terms of Springfield and other customers, is this stuff, I think, in my opinion, drives economic health, because it demonstrates the fact that you guys are making a step forward to not only be good steward, but also be focused on sustainability, which drives a little economy. Thank you.
I think, and I really appreciate the presentation, because it only makes us wiser to what's out there, number one. Number two, I'd like to say, you know, but when you, what I take away from this presentation is what you gave us, the $15.5 million investment, and that's going to be about a 17-year return on investment if you stay $800,000. I would have to consult the finance director to see if that's a good investment. The biggest thing that I see is the last time we made a large investment was for lighting in the city. And we, I was, we were going to say 38%, 40%. I'm going to assume we did, because they never came back and said we didn't. So you got to say that that was a good decision. But that was a sizable investment at that time also. And, you know, this is the things we have to listen to. We're not, we're not all scientists up here. And so we have to weigh some things with regards to, you said, you talk about stewardship, and I agree with you. I think the city of Springfield is moving in the right direction. And I think if there's, maybe not this whole project, but some of this project, maybe a good deal, a good idea. And I have the confidence in our staff that they will make the right decision to bring back to us. But again, on first look, you're right, $800,000 return on investment a year on a 15.5. It said that it isn't bad, but it's not ready to jump off the ship for, I don't think. But again, I think that we're in the, we're in the ballpark.
It's all about balance.
It's all about balance.
And what are, what are the, what are the goals? You want to measure those things? And then we start bringing that number into something that's aligned with your goal.
Anything else from Commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
And we appreciate Logan's support and all the data requests that we made to get here.
Certainly a team effort, because I really think Chris's folks were the ones providing it.
Commissioners, we do have one add-on for tonight's meeting. It's an emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement by and between the city and the Supreme Court of Ohio to accept the grant, writing funding up to an amount of $30,383.96 to purchase technology goods and services to aid in the orderly use of technology court proceedings. And then there also was an item that previously tabled at the prior meeting, and just a point of order that would need to be taken off the table before it could be considered by the Commission. We also have a proclamation and an award presentation tonight, and I would recommend that we would proceed with proclamation and the award ceremony before the formal meeting begins.
Okay. Before I start this, I like to acknowledge the person by the name they really go by. And there's two on this. Did you go by Chris or Allen? This proclamation reads as follows. "As Christopher Allen Villa started bowling at the age of one, and his childhood was filled with watching bowling on TV, bowling in his living room, and celebrating birthdays at the bowling alley. Whereas Chris's teen years were spent traveling to junior bowling tournaments and practicing for an eventual college scholarship. In fact, Chris qualified for the junior team USA at the age of 18, and helped win a team gold medal in Bangkok, Thailand prior to his college career. Whereas Chris pulled four years at the Notre Dame College in Cleveland, Ohio, and was named first team All-American three times. Following his college graduation and several years chasing his dream of the Pro Bowling Association Tour, Chris earned a spot on the PBA Tour in 2017. Whereas Chris has many successful years on the PBA Tour, has won several regional titles, and became the only professional bowler from Ohio to win the US Open on April the 11th, 2021. Impressive. Now therefore, Warren R. Copeland, the mayor of the city of Springfield, and president of the city commission, does hereby proclaim May the 25th, 2021, as Christopher Allen Villa Day in Springfield, and urge our citizens to recognize Chris's lifetime perseverance and accomplishment, and also to consider trying bowling as a fun and rewarding sport that can be enjoyed with friends and family from childhood well into adulthood. I congratulate you on behalf of the city of Springfield. This is very, very impressive."
I just want to say thank you very much to the entire city of Springfield for their continued support. Thank you, Mr. Copeland. And thank you, Mr. Hick, for nominating me as well. It's always a pleasure to come back to this town and, and see the people that, you know, I grew up with. So thank you very much. And this will definitely be on the foot. Thank you.
I believe you have a presentation? I'm sorry. Are you, are you making a presentation? No.
Your comment.
It'll be at the end of the meeting. You probably should find a seat. It'll be a while. Okay, who's, there's somebody's got a proclamation, I believe. Who is it? Got an award for somebody?
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann. Need your name for the record, please?
My name is Nadine Steele. And I am vice president of City Women's Federation. And I have my corresponding secretary with me, Mary Ann Nave, and she will tell you just a little bit about what City Federation is. And then we will present an award.
The reason we are here tonight is because Springfield City Federation annually gives out an award called the Empowering Women One by One Award. Warren is very familiar with it because Clara was one of our honorees at one time, several years ago. And we're very proud of the women that have received this previously. Tonight, we are here because we wanted you to know that City Federation is an organization that is part of the Ohio Federation of Women's Clubs, which is part of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, which is an international organization for women who give community service in their own communities. And it is an organization that was actually started here in 1894 at the hotel downtown, I can't think of the name of it right now, our old hotel, where Mill Run came in. Somebody help me. I can't remember the name. I can't hear you. No, not the Bancroft.
Springfield Inn?
The what? No.
It was the Springfield Inn, right next to the arcade.
No, it was before the Springfield Inn. It was in 1894, and it was, and I had it on the top of my head, and I'm showing my age. I'm sorry. The Arcade Hotel. Yes, that's right. Okay. And in 1894, Clementine Barry Bookwalter, who lived at 805 East High Street, where the statue of her is located now, was the woman who founded the Ohio Federation of Women's Clubs here in Springfield, Ohio. So we're very proud of that. So we've been an organization since that time. And Nadine is the chairman of the committee that's presenting the award tonight. So she's going to tell you who gets the award and why we were giving it, or at least announcing it tonight.
Everyone in the, in the community has an opportunity to nominate a woman that they feel would be worthy. It can be anyone. In Springfield and the outer areas of Springfield, and the person who nominated this woman is Harold Frost. And he is here, back here tonight. And Harold nominated a very worthy young woman. And this woman is, after reading a lot of her strengths and... And this woman is, after reading a lot of her, um, strengths and things about her, uh, we are glad tonight to congratulate Sha- Shannon Meadows. Is Shannon here tonight? Shannon, would you come up here, please? Shannon, on behalf of the City Federation, we are honored to congratulate you as this year's winner of the Empowering Women Award. And normally this letter would come to Shannon in the mail, and she would be advised of this by coming to you in the mail, but I'm giving it to you tonight because Harold wanted to surprise you at this meeting. So let's take your picture here. I think this lady would like to get your picture. And she is going to actually receive a beautiful, um, a, uh, crystal, a, a blue cobalts award coming up in June. It's June twelfth, and we'll be contacting you for lunch, and it's at the Women's Town Club. And you're going to be able to come with your family and receive that, okay? So, thank you.
Mayor Copeland, well, I have, uh, an opportunity. I would like to, uh, say something. Um, Shannon is going to be our guest speaker at the Sina Neighborhood Meeting Wednesday night at seven o'clock at Trinity Lutheran Church, so you're all welcome to come. And Thursday, the West End Committee is going to have a dedication of their renovated, uh, flower bed, which has a historic monument in it at, uh, six o'clock, and I'm sure they'd like to have people come to that. But what I really would like to tell you, in case you have not received notification, one of our very, um, outstanding leaders in our community, um, was taken, um, Monday morning. I don't know whether you've heard it or not, but Robert L. Burton, who was the mayor in nineteen seventy-two and seventy-three, um, passed away Monday morning. So I wanted to ask everybody to pray for their family, too. Thank you.
Okay, the clerk has informed me we need to close the informal meeting, right? Their motion to do so?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes. The formal meeting of the city commission is called to order. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Our God, we're grateful for people like Shannon who do the things that make Springfield a good place, help us make good decisions for the community this evening, and we do it with a concern for all of our citizens. In your name we pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and true republic and liberty for which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, free, open, and just for all.
Their motion to approve the minutes of last meeting?
Moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk will call the roll.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes. The clerk will proceed with first readings by title only.
Amend ordinance number ninety-one ninety, passed March twelfth, nineteen ninety-one, and commonly known as the codified ordinances of the city of Springfield, Ohio, by enacting new chapter three seventy-seven titled Electric Scooters or E-Scooters. Confirming and approving a development incentive agreement, single-family residential development with the Martin Living Trust via Martin, Barbara A. Martin trustee, provide for water services to real property outside the city limit. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Peterson Construction Company for the primary effluent pumps replacement, an electrical upgrades project for an amount not to exceed six million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Chemco Systems LP for the lime slaker upgrade project for an amount not to exceed six hundred forty-seven thousand forty dollars. Amending the city's mode of own pro- program to enable city staff to record the property deed on behalf of the participant, and directing the city manager, law director, and finance director to do all things they consider necessary to carry out the mode of own program. Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number two to the subrecipient funding agreement, Emergency Financial Hardship Assistance, CBG two thousand and twenty, with Neighborhood Housing Partnership of Greater Springfield Incorporated, to extend the contract completion date to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and confirming and approving related expenditures from December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Authorizing the city manager to enter into an amendment number one to the subrecipient funding agreement, COVID-nineteen Financial Hardship Assistance Program, Home Tenant Based Assistance, two thousand and twenty, with Neighborhood Housing Partnership of Greater Springfield Incorporated, to extend the contract completion date to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and confirming and approving related expenditures from December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Any questions or comments from commissioners on first readings?
Yeah. Mayor Copeland, um, I was wondering if city staff might give us a little more information about items one forty dash twenty-one and one forty-one dash twenty-one. Obviously, six point four eight million dollars is a lot of money, and six hundred and forty-seven thousand is a dump change. So, uh, I just wondered if you could help us understand what spending so much money could...
Absolutely. I'll, I'll start with the big one, the six point four million dollars. This replaces the primary effluent pumps at our wastewater treatment plant. These pumps are the first place that all of the wastewater has to be lifted in order to be treated. Um, the pumps have been replaced systematically throughout the years, but the original controls bit configuration wasn't sold in the sixties, and it has reached a point where modern pumps will not work in this configuration. So this will modernize the pit, the pumps, and all the controls, and help eliminate a bottleneck with inside the wastewater treatment plant. This project's been in the planning and design stage for about five years. Uh, the other, which is, uh, six hundred and forty-seven, but just a fraction of the cost, is at the water treatment plant on Eagle City Road. This replaces our lime slakers that are right around twenty years old. They are what takes the lime when it comes in a dry powder form, mixes it into a solution, and allows it to be, to start off the water treatment process. Um, we use brooms and sometimes Wolfaball back to beat on these and make them work properly right now because we cannot buy parts. Um, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Rue commented once on why was the top of our building white? The top of the building was white because, um, the lime backed up. So this will eliminate that problem. Yeah, you, you don't know what goes into making water sometimes, but it, it happens. Um, and it, it also obviously helps, uh, you know, make things much safer, so this should keep us, uh, working well for the next twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five years.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Chris, that's the longevity of it, about twenty-five years?
Yeah, the, the last ones we bought, they said fifteen to seventeen, and they were spot on. Now they're saying these should go twenty to twenty-five.
Anything else on commissioners on first readings?
Yes, I have a question on one thirty-eight twenty-one, because when I first saw this, I thought, oh, great, now we got scooters. So I would like our staff to talk about the E-scooters, and what's the difference in the E-scooters and the mobility scooters?
Yes, thanks, commissioners. Um, I'm actually going to ask Logan Cobb, uh, assistant to the city manager. She has worked on this project with our legal team and police division in putting it in that.
Sure. Thank you, commissioner. So we have been receiving some, some interest and some inquiries, um, from these E-scooter companies, um, which prompted us to really look at our code. So originally, we were going to place these under electric bicycles, but the, with the change that took place in the ORC this year, we were going to have issues with enforcement. So Brian alluded to this, but we have been, this definitely has been a joint effort between our office and legal and PD. Um, but this ordinance details scooter classification, um, enforcement requirements, violations, parking, um, et cetera. And we were able to rem- remedy some of the safety concerns that were brought up during some of our staff meetings. Um, commissioner, remind me of your second question.
The difference between this and I have a mobility scooter, can I just drive it on the street, too?
No, so we have actual requirements for what an E-scooter is that's found on the third page, but it has to have handlebars, it has to have, um, two wheels, it has to have an electric motor, um, and a lamp in the front and the back. So I'm not sure exactly how your mobility scooter is equipped, um, but, um, we have specific requirements here.
Okay, so my next question is, when I first saw this, I remember stories on TV where people just drop them off anywhere.
Hmm.
Is that going to be the case?
No, so we do have requirements on where they can and cannot be parked. So cannot be parked in transit zones, loading docks, um, parking zones, street curbs. Um, there are specific places for these to be parked, um, on the curb of the sidewalk is, is a great example.
My last question is, how am I supposed to know all of this?
How are you supposed to know all of this?
All of these guidelines and these rules, right?
So we'll make this available on our website, and definitely as, um, we continue these conversations with these different, um, companies, a press release will go out, and we'll make sure that the community is well, um, notified on what can and cannot be done and what these guidelines state.
Thank you.
Logan, I have a question also.
Okay.
Based on Mrs. Chilton's last question, these are going to be owned by the owner, the people that actually own them themselves. They're not going to be rentals like the bicycles used to be. So they won't be leaving them off anywhere.
These will be owned by the company, and for a small fee, people can rent these and ride these.
Around the city?
In a, in a boundary, yes.
Okay, so they will be dropped off someplace?
Yes.
So it will be very similar to what the bicycle program was before?
Similar, yes. Um, the companies that at least we've been in touch with have definitely, um, been very, um, cautious of this, and this was a concern for us, just scooters everywhere, um, being left, and we've been assured that, um, scooters would be picked up at the end of each day.
Are the rules for these scooters going to be the same rules for the people that have private scooters?
I'm not sure.
That's not a good answer.
What, what the rules are for private scooters, so private electric scooters?
Right.
Yes, you'd, you'd be able to ride these the same way that you would personally owning it.
You're describing a scooter. What about a person that has a electric motorized wheelchair that rides it up and down the street all the time and on the sidewalk and places like that? I'm sure they consider that a scooter.
Well, there's different qualifications for this actual electric scooter than an electric bicycle, so we'd have to differentiate between the two, um, on those requirements.
Time, not more handicap, Emmy. I know. Yeah, okay. That's what I'm considering. I just, I just don't want the people that have these now or something like them to be confused. Are they allowed to use them or aren't they allowed to use them?
This is, for Commissioner O'Neil, if I can help, this is more of an E-shared scooter, so it's not just somebody's private scooter. It's a provider that comes in, um, gets an application, is, goes through a provider use agreement, which is part of how those are picked up, and then it's a shared, um, so conceptually, think about it more like the bicycle than just someone's, um, mobility, I guess you could say, mobility scooter, or someone that uses it as an assistant. That would be regulated different under the revised code, so this is a different, um, animal, so to speak.
These are all over larger cities. I was just in Nashville, they're everywhere on every street corner. There is, I'm sure there is some concern with, they do get dumped in places where they shouldn't, and that's why we're doing the ordinance, but...
I think it's a good idea. I just want to make sure there, there, there's people that are using scooters today.
There'll have to be a clear differentiation between the two, absolutely. And I think Jill made a really good point on the agreement, um, that'll be put in place.
On item twenty, two sixty-four fourteen, mode of own, I'm assuming that for us who recorded the property deed, just to make the process go a little faster and smoother, is that correct?
That is correct, and I'll ask Steve if he wants to talk kind of what's happening and why we decided this was the best fit moving forward for the program.
I know we've had a lot of success with mode of own, so if there are things we can do to tweak it, make it even better, I'm absolutely...
Yeah, and definitely this is just one of those minor tweaks. So we've had a handful of instances where, um, the applicant maybe has passed away, so they weren't able to record it under the original application name, and so their wife or husband comes in. And so what we have to do as staff then is create a whole new deed. And so what we're trying to do here is kind of take the burden off the applicant to go ahead and get that done, where just when the property is ready, the city staff can go ahead and record it for them. Try to cut out that, try to cut out any instances where there are name differentiations like that.
If you would, I'm going to use this occasion to explain briefly what the program is, and if people have interest, what do they need to do?
Sure, so the mode of own program was created in two thousand and fifteen. It was created as a way for residents to obtain vacant properties in the city of Springfield. Um, at one point, we had over three hundred and fifty abandoned lots that we mowed every year, and this was an effort to try to reduce those number of lots that the city maintained that have been forfeited to the state. And so basically, to be an eligible applicant, you have to be, um, own property in the city of Springfield, be up to date on your property taxes, not be subject to enforcement violation where the city had to take action for the past thirty-six months, and you have to live within a thousand feet of the property. So if there is a vacant lot that you're curious about, uh, give us a call at nine three seven three two four seven three eight zero, and we can check on that lot for you. We can make sure if it's eligible or not, and if it is eligible and you're eligible as an applicant, we can help you with the application process.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else on first readings?
Yes, uh, Shannon, you don't get off of this one. Can you talk about one ninety-eight dash twenty and one forty-two dash twenty-one on the Neighborhood Housing Partnership and Grant, I mean, in greatest, of Greater Springfield? Is there still emergency financial hardship assistance available?
Thanks for asking this question, commissioner, because I think it needs to be clarified. Um, this legislation is extending the agreement time just so the grants administration staff can close out, um, the grant with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. So the emergency assistance that was made available during COVID-nineteen by the city of Springfield through NHP for Rent and Utility Assistance has ended. Um, it's important to understand the reason that that ended is because the state of Ohio was able to infuse much larger amount of rent and utility assistance into each community throughout the state. And so OIC is the place that administers rent and utility assistance for our families throughout Clark County who are struggling to pay their rent and/or utilities, as well as mortgage assistance. Um, to, to do that, the easiest thing is to go to the OIC website, um, and download a package. I will say that, um, if you're watching tonight and you think that you need assistance, or if you are a landlord who thinks that their tenants may need assistance, um, I would encourage you actually to go ahead and call our office at nine three seven three two four seven three eight zero, so that we can walk you step by step through how to download that packet. Um, the phone lines at OIC are very overwhelmed right now, so a number of partners, including the Community Development Department, are trying to help, um, walk individuals through, uh, those packets. The important thing to know, even though we're closing out the Rent and Utility Assistance Program with the city, is that Rent and Utility Assistance is still available, and there should be no reason that an individual needs to be evicted for lack of paying rent right now. So tenants and landlords both, the funding is available. We encourage you to get those packets, work with OIC. Now remember, I mean, eviction is eviction, and there's many ways to get evicted other than not paying your rent. But if you're struggling to pay your rent, or if you are struggling to pay your utilities, you really do need to reach out. Thank you. That answers my question.
Anybody else on first reads?
Mayor Copeland, I'd like to move to take item number ninety-two twenty-one that was tabled in the May eleventh meeting, uh, from the table. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning zero point five acre at nine oh eight West North Street, Springfield, Ohio, from RS five low-density single-family residence district to CC two community commercial district.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
I unfortunately couldn't attend our last meeting, and I know several of us had expressed at the meeting prior to that that there needed to be some improvement to the property. Uh, I assume those improvements have been made, uh and if so, I I would like to thank the community members who stepped up and and called our attention to this, as well as the property owner who took action to remediate the problem. Uh, that's how a community should work to solve problems. So I'm I'm pleased to hear from my fellow commissioners that uh it was work that has been done and I'm comfortable going, thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Anybody in the audience wanna speak to this matter? Name and address for the rec. I can't hear you.
Larry Jones, one twenty-four Northwestern Avenue. I stay on the same street. And I don't think that store is good enough for gas station on there. There are too many kids running in and out of the parking lot late at night.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Too many kids are running in and out of the parking lot late at night is what you're saying, so you're concerned about a gas station being there. Is that right? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Willie U. Banks, one twenty-four Northwestern Avenue. And I'd like to say the same thing. Uh, they don't need to have a gas station there. The traffic there is enough already, and it's be a lot of wrecks on that corner of Western and uh Main Street. And it'd be a lot of wreck there, so I don't think it should be there.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Hundred Pacific, twenty seventeen Providence Avenue. Um, I work in Snyder Park and I see a lot of traffic down there a lot. I visit that area a lot. Um, they do business going on in the area for that. I don't think gas station, I think we'd be a bad thing for the community as well. I see a lot of kids there as well. One of the concerns I have about it as well. I also think that as too congested as it is currently, very hard to get in and out of the the drive-through that they have, especially in the rear of it, very, very tight in that area to begin with out of it. That creates a huge problem for traffic coming in and out of that area in the back. And I think if they have the gas station, it'll be even more traffic. And I really believe that it really uh situation. And I like said, I work there and go there all the time. Other situations, really think that they're really, really bad.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment on that.
I don't think that my phone's working very well.
Yeah, I don't either.
Not you.
The comment I wanted to make on that is we're not voting on a gas station tonight. We're voting on a CC two zoning, which allows many, many other things other than a gas station. It's on West North Street, not Western Avenue, and the part that traffic numbers every day, whether it be a gas station or a convenience store or a thrift store, is gonna generate traffic, but we're not voting on it. We're voting on, does it need to be, is it gonna be CC?
So can our staff talk about what a CC two is? For zoning?
So the CC two district, that's our community commercial district, and you find that district along our um commercial corridors such as Becca Avenue, South Limestone Street, and East Main Street. Um, I can go back on the map. Then you see a couple parcels down to the west, there are, or that gas station is already zoned CC two as well. There's also some CC two to the southeast. So it's not out of place for a CC two district to be along this corridor. It is a major thoroughfare.
Steve, could you also address um with that the process? So as Commissioner O'Neill stated tonight, we're looking at the rezoning of the prop. What would be the next step if the owner wanted to proceed with gas?
Sure, so if it is rezoned to CC two, a gas station still requires a conditional use permit to be approved through our Board of Zoning Guild. So that is a separate public process that anyone notified of this hearing will also get notice of if the applicant chooses proceed. So at that point, um they'll have more of an opportunity to speak out directly opposing a gas station. But the other uses within the CC two district, like the retail office, those fit within the corridor.
Oh, it seemed like this got um like dropped and somehow when we rezoned things, is that what happened?
Prior to two thousand one, it had um, I believe, a business automotive zoning, which is what that whole block was zoned, and that zoning did permit gas station. So uh I'm not sure why in two thousand one um the decision was made to make it residential, but it it was rezoned to a resident.
So if everybody, just so everyone understands, this would change the zoning, but if the person wants to have a gas station, they'll have to go back through the process to get that approved. We're not voting on what's gonna be there. We're voting on what the status of the zoning is.
And if people are interested in pursuing this, following this, as these gentlemen are, Steve, did they call you to find out what's going on with the property or how can they stay involved and express their concern?
Yeah, they can call me directly at nine three seven three two four seven six seven four.
Slowly again, please.
Nine three seven three two four seven six seven four.
Okay, and you can get them up to date on where things stand?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And if they live close enough, they'll be notified in the mail.
Yes.
See, but my main thing is the kid. You know what I'm saying? That's the main thing. I got fourteen kids, and um that's all I worry about.
God bless you.
Thank y'all. Bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All the rule.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development incentive agreement, single-family residential development, with Deborah M. Patrick provide for water and sewer services to real property outside the city limit.
No move, Estram.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions, comments from the commission? From the audience? All the rule.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Amending ordinance number ninety-one ninety past March twelfth, nineteen ninety-one, and commonly known as the codified ordinances of the city of Springfield, Ohio, by repealing and replacing chapter nine sixteen entitled Use of Public Sewers.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
I would like to, since I wasn't here for the first reading, I was wondering if someone might explain exactly what we're repealing and repealing.
Yes, commissioners, I'll ask Chris Moore, our service director, to do so.
Thank you.
So Commissioner, this is an ordinance that um the U.S. and Ohio EPA require us to do some periodic maintenance to. The the overwhelming majority of these changes are changes so that it references the appropriate state and federal code. Um, there is one change that was more driven by staff, and what that does is we have a handful of what we call significant industrial users. These are the 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 big, big users in town, and they pay a premium above and beyond what the rest of us pay because the strength of their sewage is so strong, it costs more to treat. This gives them an option to choose an average monthly bill um so it can flatten that curve for them. They would still pay the same amount of money, but it would eliminate the peaks and valleys in their bill.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? All the rule.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Providing for supplemental appropriations within various funds and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? All the rule.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Amending ordinance number twenty-one fourteen to revise the transfer of monies authorized and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? All the rule.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for demolition services with Tony Smith, doing business as Tony Smith, wrecking and trucking, for an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? All the rule.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city to retain membership in the Ohio Benefit Cooperative Incorporated, OBC, Regional Council of Government, to participate in its OBC Medical Purchasing Cooperative and authorizing the city manager, law director, director of finance, and personnel director to do all things necessary for compliance with OBC bylaws and the Jefferson Health Plan Agreement, all to provide medical and prescription drug coverage benefits for the city's employees, authorizing expenditures necessary to fulfill the city's obligations under said bylaws and J H agreement, and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission? Audience? All the rule.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the renewal purchase of six hundred and ten Google Workspace Business Licenses and support from S H I International Corp. for an amount not to exceed one four hundred nineteen thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars fifty cents for a five-year term through Omnia Partners pursuant to the Omnia Partners Contract Purchasing Cooperative Program in accordance with the provisions of section nine point four eight of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
Quick question, clarity. Uh, it's four and eighteen for the five-year period, is that right? Or is it four nineteen a year?
Uh, no, that is for the five-year
Five-year
Thank you.
Could you tell us what six, why we're purchasing six hundred and ten Google Workspace Business Licenses and what does that cover?
Um, what that does is that covers the Google suite of software uh which basically allows us to run our business uh and we, it provides six hundred and ten seat licenses for each of our employees so that we can communicate with them and well as conduct business on a daily basis. Thank you.
Anyone else? All the rule.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the acceptance of a donation from the Defense Logistics Agency of two Kawasaki K A F four hundred A mules valued at seven thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars each for a total value of fourteen thousand five hundred four dollars and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, I I was wondering if one of the staff, tell us what kind of mules we're buying, seven thousand two hundred dollars.
If they're automated.
Old gray ones, old gray ones.
I didn't know mules were going for that kind of money these days.
Well, these uh take gas and not hay, Commissioner, but uh um these Kawasaki mules are are utility vehicles like side-by-sides. If you think about the utility trucks you see on the sidelines of football games when they haul off injured players or utility vehicles you see driving around the Wittenburg campus, uh that's what these are. Um, this is gonna allow us when we're working on off-road situations like sometimes in search and rescue and or something like when we're working a parade where we need to kind of move up and down the line with water or or aid for people, is to allow us to do that. And once again, this is something that we can do through the uh uh military surplus system uh to kind of add to our flexibility, but the only cost that was the uh that the citizens endured was the cost of gas it took to go to Columbus and pick them up and bring them here.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes.
All the rule.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement to finance the water treatment plant, Limeslaker Upgrade Project, with the Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA, and declaring an emergency therein.
No move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? All the rule.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Carpenter Marty Transportation Incorporated for the Columbia Street Streetcape Enhancement Project for an amount not to exceed eighty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars ninety-seven cents and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, um what area again um does this cover? And can you talk about what it is that we're getting for this amount of money with street scape enhancement?
Yeah, so this is for the design work for the project, uh really approximately around the Fountain Avenue area uh to the west to just shy of Wittenburg, just past the cemetery, the Columbia Street Cemetery, and this is on the Columbia Street uh roadway. Streetscape, uh looking at uh adding the downtown streetscape as part of the unified plan on the uh northern side of the roadway. Southern side of the roadway already has streetscape amenities added, but then we're also looking at uh improvements that will help um hopefully slow traffic down in that corridor. As you know, really that Fountain, Columbia has kind of become a core uh area of our downtown with the businesses and stuff, so we're trying to really help curb the speeding that is occurring uh specific corridor. And as you know, we've had our tele's uh that is located now, that building's hit several times, a lot of it due to people speeding and running the light there, and we're looking to improve it, mitigate.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All the rule.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland? Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number one to the engineering agreement with Porta Nemeth Engineering Incorporated for the two thousand and twenty-two waterline replacement project to increase the contract in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand sixty-eight dollars forty-two cents for a total contract amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars sixteen cents and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt.
Second. And moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? Clerk will call the roll?
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an L P A agreement number three five two two one, amendment number two between the city and the Ohio Department of Transportation in connection with the State Route seventy-two project, T I D number one one three seven nine two, provide clarity regarding the funding sources and declaring an emergency therein.
I'll move.
Second. Moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? Clerk will call the roll?
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Consenting to an improvement by the resurfacing of North Street between Lagonda Avenue and Limestone Street and U S forty between Lagonda Avenue and Greymont Avenue, project identified as U S forty, T I D number one oh three 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 two, requesting cooperation of the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio in the planning, design, and construction of such improvement, providing for the maintenance of that improvement, authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio necessary to complete the planning and construction of this improvement, and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt.
Second. And moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission? Audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for purchase and sale of real estate and sign a municipal general warranty deed conveying certain property no longer needed for municipal purposes to Masstow Holdings LLC and declaring an emergency therein.
Don't move.
Second. And moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission?
Uh, I was wondering if, uh, John Meyer was here to speak to this. John, if, if you wouldn't mind, tell us about what, what you plan to do with?
Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Manager, pleasure, pleasure being here. As you guys are aware of, before the pandemic, we were interested in a property on Lefty Lane. We actually went through a zoning process and, uh, we had a ninety-day due diligence to, to look at that building. We hired an architect, uh, went up the bottom, and the facility just did not meet our need. Uh, there was a lack of concrete, of course, we have every machinery, et cetera, so. The Lefty Lane project, although we were excited about it, would have been nice, I was kind of excited to be on the south side to help, help that area, it just did not work out. So we are going to be constructing a new forty-three thousand square foot facility at Air Park, Ohio, uh, next to Bob Evans Transport on Greenfield Street, and that's, this contract is for eight point five five acres, Brian, I think is exactly, um, that we will be purchasing. Uh, construction of the project will start probably October, hopefully we'll have the building delivered, although we are running into tremendous supply chain issues. So we're crossing our fingers, we can be actually erecting steel by, uh, by winter, so that's the, and we'll be bringing, uh, currently fifty-five jobs, when we did that Lefty Lane project, we were at eighty-two, uh, we are creeping our way back up now. We do a lot of aerospace, of manufacturing, and we all know what happened to the aerospace sector. It's starting to come back, and, uh, that's, right now, we'll be bringing fifty-five jobs to the airport.
Thank you, John. I'm so delighted to see this project on the agenda tonight, to be able to locate at the airport. I, I also just want to comment in general, our airport continues to grow and expand in terms of economic development and interest, and we're happy to have your company a part of that growth.
Well, we're, we're excited about, um, almost being in the city of Springfield, but not really, but, but part of the Springfield Airport, and we also believe that the, the growth potential out there is tremendous, the flying car, uh, the testing that's going on out there now, we make parts for Boeing, Lockheed, all the aerospace companies, so we're excited about that, because I think maybe we can get involved with that maybe. So we're excited to be part of the whole airport experience, as you know, I was at township custody, and, and really pushed to get that airport moving, and starting to finally take off, and we're really excited about it.
Thank you.
John Maurer was a valuable member of the airport board for years. If it was not the airport, he was bored, and he was very helpful with the city in the tax situation a bit, but John, I really appreciate this, stay on the course.
Well, not a problem, and we're happy to do it, and, uh, looking forward to big things out there. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else? Clerk will call the roll?
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement by and between the city and the Supreme Court of Ohio to accept the grant, providing funding up to an amount of thirty thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars ninety-six cents to purchase technology goods and services to aid in the orderly use of technology or court proceedings, authorizing the city manager, finance director, and court administrator of the municipal court to do all things necessary to implement said grant agreement and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements and declaring an emergency therein.
Move to adopt.
Second. And moved and seconded, questions or comments from the commission? From the audience? Or call the roll?
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilton?
Yes.
Dr. Estram?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
That concludes our agenda, are there other items that we've come forward with?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take a moment to thank my colleagues on the commission and the city staff members for the beautiful bouquet sent to my self and my family on the passing of my mother May seventh. Uh, the Estram family has absolutely been almost overwhelmed with the support of people in this community, including my colleagues here. Uh, she was ninety-four years old and led life well lived, and, um, while we miss her tremendously, we are extremely thankful for the support shown to the Estram families. We'll thank all of you very, very much, it is sincerely appreciated. I also wanted to use this opportunity to commend my colleagues, um, city staff and on the commission with the passing of the ordinance establishing the Grocery Land Market , uh, on South, uh, Limestone, that's critical to step forward, and I wish I could have been here to offer my support for it, but, uh, I'm pleased that we've been able to move forward, forward solution of that food desert on our south side. And lastly, the approval of the goals and objectives, I again want to commend the staff and my fellow commissioners for a job well done. Our goals and objectives that we adopt provide a general framework for the city in terms of where we are and where we want to go, and the staff has been excellent in terms of, uh, linking things to those objectives as we consider various ordinances that come before us. So, job well done, all. Again, my thanks on behalf of the entire Estram family for all the kind thoughts and prayer, and...
Anyone else?
Want to remind everybody, Memorial Day Parade is on Monday, start at nine o'clock.
Uh, I just want to say, uh, one thing about things going on in Columbus, uh, there is an effort to pass legislation which would say that if you, uh, work in Springfield but live somewhere else, you don't have to pay taxes to the city of Springfield. The city of Springfield invested significant efforts, including money, to get companies to locate inside the city. We did not attempt to annex all the housing because, uh, we didn't need to, and now they're trying to change the rules. This would be a major hit to our budget. It would make it nearly impossible for us to continue our police and fire at the level they are. So, uh, if you have a chance, you might, uh, write to our local legislators. I wrote to the, the House Representative today, uh, explaining that this is a major, major problem for the city's... Okay, so over the last two days, I spent time talking to, uh, Mr. Holciser and, and Mr. Fet, now for some reason they're here this evening, I don't quite understand that. Basil Fet, we have a three-minute limit, by the way, Basil.
Yes, sir. Uh, Basil Fet, eight oh six South Fountain Avenue. My name is Basil Fet, I am making a statement on behalf of the Alternative Energy Committee, a citizens advisory group that has been meeting for two years to consider ways to encourage the use of clean, renewable energy sources by the city and in our community. We commend the city for engaging with E S G to study the feasibility of alternative energy and conservation measures, and urge that you move forward with this proposal. Moving toward renewable energy sources will have several benefits for the city and its residents. The city can save money on its utility costs, and those funds can be used for other programs that benefit people. By generating power on its own property, the city can be independent of energy sources often imported from foreign nations that are unstable and ridden with conflict. E S G estimates that the proposed changes would, could prevent over three thousand seven hundred tons of carbon dioxide emissions every year. Carbon dioxide emissions are the primary driver of global warming, which is already causing major harm to our nation through extreme weather events, rising sea levels, spread of tropical diseases, and other adverse trends. Any contribution to slowing these developments will help our community and others in our region and nation. In addition, increasing use of fossil fuels reduces the particulate emissions in our air, which will improve health outcomes for people with respiratory ailments such as asthma or emphysema. Perhaps of equal importance, these tangible benefits would be an improvement in Springfield's image. Forward-thinking individuals and companies take note of cities that try new things and try to tackle problems that others ignore. Beginning this alternative energy program can only make Springfield more attractive to young people who rank climate change as one of their top concerns. We commend the city for considering this promising initiative and hope you will move forward to make Springfield a center for the use of clean, renewable energy. And I wish to thank Dr. Estram for his support of, uh, of the committee and, and the things that we're trying to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a card first, and then, and I'll, 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 Bob Holciser.
I'm Bob Holciser, and I live at nineteen oh nine West Washington Street for, at seven years. Uh, I'm here tonight to thank the commission and the city, uh, the West End Neighborhood Group, we're getting smaller, like all neighborhood groups, and we're getting a lot older, and, uh, we undertook a job that we weren't sure that would work. Uh, we, we've been mowing a, a lot that belonged to the Big Four Railroad, and we've been mowing it for forty years, and I ran into a guy most of you know, Bill Smith, who used to be the basketball coach out of Kenton Ridge and so forth, and he's also on the National Road Committee, and our lot is on the National Road, nineteen hundred West Main Street. So I, I ran into Wayne, Wayne, one day, and I said, "Bill, we got this beautiful lot up there, I think the National Road ought to put a sign up there, it's showing that this is the National Road. Coming into Springfield from the west, you got a eighteen by ten sign, and that's it." And he said, "Well, I'll take a look at it." He calls me back two days later, and he says, "I got something for you, better than a sign." And I said, "Really?" He says, "How about an original highway marker?" And I said, "Oh, boy, that'd be beautiful." And he did, he rounded up number three oh five marker, and for some of you that I sure don't know, don't know, there's three hundred and six markers from Cumberland, Maryland to Springfield, Ohio, and the markers were made in eighteen thirty-nine, and if you've ever looked at them, on one side, it'll say Cumberland, Maryland, X number of miles, ours is three hundred and five, uh, one side will say the closest town, and so we decided, you know, we, we had to do something. So with the help of the city, and financially from the Turner Foundation, and the Springfield Foundation, and the city of Springfield, we got this thing done, and we're tomorrow, Thursday night at six o'clock, we're going to have a little dedication there, and it's just, hey, just, just drive by, and, uh, midnight on your way home, drive by, and it is a gorgeous thing, and it represents, we have roses, it represents Rose City, we have original bricks out of the National Road, but they were nineteen fifteen, that's when the road was paved. Main Street was a dirt road going through Springfield. So, yeah, just take a, just take a minute and, and, uh, and take a look at it, and think, and think of your history, and then we, hey, you all have a wonderful thanks coming. Thanks to Shannon, this is her night, and she made all this happen. Yes, the, the, she, if, she's got to be the, the, a doll. So, uh, I guess, and other than that, we do have another project, too, uh, we're about to wrap up the burial ground, the old cemetery at, on Columbia Street, nobody knows how it got its name, because Columbia Street wasn't even there. So, uh, it's, 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 it's a big project, dude, that's gonna, about a million-dollar project, and, uh...
Thank you.
I, I would say by spring, it'll be, it'll be completed, and it's, uh, it'll, it'll be an attraction to the medical center, and the brewery, and, you know, all, all the stuff downtown that they've been doing, and we're just going to add to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone address for the record?
My name is Harold Frost, three oh four three Armsgate Road, Springfield, oh three, and I would like to thank the total commission for letting me, with the project I had, let it go on right here at the meeting, and let it occur. I think it's been a wonderful, beautiful thing, thank you very, very much.
Anyone else? We probably should adjourn while Shannon can still walk. Get her head through the door.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, clerk will call the roll?
Mr. Rue?